Five thirty-four, we'll call the meeting to order. If you would, join us for invocation and flag salute.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you thanking you for this opportunity to come together and improve our community. Please bless our citizens and city leadership and give this committee guidance, understanding and all matters of justice in your name. Amen.
Thank you. If you would, perform roll call, please.
Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Commissioner Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Horner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Here.
Chairman Jackson?
Here. First order of business are consent items. One A, consideration approval of minutes of the December third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
I make motion to approve.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Newsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Moving to the public hearings portion three A, consideration of possible approval of rezone requests for property located at twelve twenty-four West Evergreen. Mr. Cottrell?
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't think that's a... We had a citizen approach. I do want to point out that on the notice of public hearing, the information was all correct. The only thing that there was a typo on was the applicant name at the top. It said Rack Investments LLC. That was not the correct applicant name for that. But the applicant had approached staff seeking to rezone a corner lot on Evergreen, at one twenty-four West Evergreen, to residential. They had purchased the property, was having trouble getting it rented out for commercial, but they were having more interest in it as residential property. Staff's recommendation was that we didn't need to go back residential, only move forward from there. Future land use map did indicate Central Business District, and we felt to fit their need, that was the best route for them to take. I know that it's been discovered that the short-term use, or short-term rental, or Airbnb is actually allowed only in R-three, not in the Central Business District, so that information has come to light since. But for that, I'll open it up to any questions or concerns.
So, before we begin, as I understand it, Central Business District has a specified lot and block area, which, based on the description provided, Block one sixty is not in that, so I don't know that CBD is an appropriate request. I think that'd be something that would have to be changed by ordinance, City Council. I didn't know if you had any comments on that?
Correct.
Are there any other questions for staff?
I have the same note about the CBD being defined. I don't know how we would add a lot to that definition without the city rewriting what the CBD was legally. But Whitney probably knows better than I do.
Any other questions for staff?
I do have one question. Where do we talk about short-term rentals in our ordinances?
I don't believe there's...
Find anything in there?
A very clear definition in there regarding short-term rentals. There has been discussion to extend that past what it's there now, but now there's very little in there regarding that now.
Under our permitted uses, there were only two that I thought might even pertain to that. The title of the first was dwelling, rooming, boarding leases, and dormitories, which was R-three, and lodges, which was R-three. We don't have anything specified directly as short-term leases, but that might be a change we want to consider.
Paul, we have several properties, at least that I'm somewhat aware of, in Durant that are operating as Airbnbs, but I was under the impression they were not R-three, so what are they operating under? Or did they go through the city at all?
I don't believe they went through the city at all. That got brought to my attention today in a discussion, in a meeting. And unless it's just advertised for us to, you know, there's a few things going on that wasn't properly done, and we have no awareness of that we're going to have to start addressing now. And Airbnbs are, they're as common now as townhomes are, so it's something we're going to have to get out in front of and get something done. But to my knowledge right now, there's nothing other than it saying it has to be an R-three.
So, Whitney, Shane and I had talked earlier. We may have a discussion about some new business, about maybe making some changes or recommendations too, so. Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak? If you would, please come to the mic and state your name. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Schussler. Sorry, I have a thing going on. Can I just tell my story? Okay, so we bought the property in two thousand and one, I think, and I guess it was already commercial because Brett Newton had a hair salon there called the Best Little Hair House in Town. And I had it as a photography studio for years, and I've rented it out commercially since. But I know when I was in high school, it was a, it's a house. And I know that it was lived in when I was in high school by actually Mark Hall that used to be here. Anyway, so we just put up a for rent sign because our last people moved out, I think it was April. So it's been sitting there vacant since April, us trying to rent it. And we got about eighty calls wanting residential. We got about four calls wanting commercial. And as you know, when you drive through town, there's vacant commercial properties everywhere, which doesn't look good or help our community. We wanted to put it in as an Airbnb and try it just because I'm a poker player, and I know that Airbnbs are needed because about seventy dealers come here four times a year, and they all rent Airbnbs all over. And the casino, when they're busy having concerts and other events, they charge eight hundred dollars a night for a room, which the city doesn't get any taxes from that, I'm pretty sure. Whereas in Airbnb, they would get compensated from that. Also, we need residential, so if it isn't an Airbnb, if we can't make it a go as that, then I would like it to be a house again. So I don't know, I was under the impression that the CBD could have been either, but now I'm not sure after hearing all this discussion. I would just like it to be able to be a house or an Airbnb because the house next door to it, which was a house, it was Randy Gentry's house, and it's for sale also, and it's like a dance clothes store. They're not selling it because nobody, there's commercial buildings empty everywhere. Nobody wants commercial anymore. Times have changed. Everybody's finding everything online now, working from home. We don't need more commercial places. We need more residential places. That's my story.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Any questions for the applicant? Just as a point of commentary, and this is just my own opinion, I'm not speaking for everybody. I'm not personally against having Airbnb there. I think the issue that I run into on this is our city ordinance says that it needs to be R-three, at least the way that I, the way that I see it. And we're not able to rezone that to R-three right now either. So we're not able, I'm not able to make a recommendation against something that's against our city law. So the path moving forward would be to either use it as commercial or have a change in law that allows you to use it as Airbnb or short-term lease.
I still don't, okay. So how does that law get changed?
From a recommendation to City Council and their approval.
And like I can just recommend that?
You can probably call your City Councilman and talk to him.
Do I need to get a petition or something?
I don't know about that.
I mean, I can get people on my side.
I would suggest that maybe you start with a conversation with whoever your council member is or other council members and see if one of them, if that's something...
I don't even live in the city limits.
Well, but you have property in the city limits, and so whoever...
We have lots of property in the city.
Whoever, whichever council member is over this area, they would be the appropriate person to start with and suggest that maybe the rules need to change and visit with that council member about it.
How long is a process like that? And how much more? Because I already paid two thousand dollars for this.
I couldn't tell you on that. I mean, that's outside the scope of what I would know, so I don't know.
Okay. So this is probably going to get all denied, right?
My personal opinion, and no one else up here has, you know, voted yet, but my personal opinion is I couldn't personally recommend something that's against what we have stated in law.
And can I get a copy of wherever that says the Airbnb has to be in R-three?
Yeah, that's on permitted uses. Paul might be able to help you do that. I think something else that, when we're talking about CBD, is we have a defined area, which is downtown, that's also stated in our ordinance. So, you know, we don't have, you know, we don't have the authority to change that City Council would. You know, so there's two ways that, you know, we could go about it. You know, we could either change where short-term leases are permitted, where that use is permitted. But again, I don't see where it's permitted in CBD either, only R-three at the moment, so, you know, even if it was CBD, we would need to change that.
There's a lot of Airbnbs running around. You can pull it up and look at them all. So, I don't know. I mean...
Well, that's why I was asking the question to Paul. What is everybody else running under? Because that would be important for the city-making policy going forward, and I don't know the answer to that. I mean...
There's a good chance those other Airbnbs are in a residentially zoned lot.
Right.
The one you're requesting is just in a commercially zoned lot.
Right, right.
The ones I know of are in residential lots, but obviously I'm not aware of all of them.
But it does look bad to just keep having so many empty commercial buildings around town that are just going to be falling down because the owners can't make any money to help take care of them.
I think as a part of our new business, after we hear this, there might be some further discussion on possible solutions too.
Okay.
Would it be beneficial, and you may be wrong here, correct me, to put this on hold for a little while until maybe some plans are put in place to see if that could come about before voting upon this, or would it just be...
So I don't have to pay all these fees again?
Potentially, we could table, but we'll have to name a specific date. And so I don't know when, I don't know when or if this will be resolved.
Yeah, I would, if there's... I don't know if there's a time limit or a timeframe that you have to table it. But I think, just to be fair, give her a shot here. If we could do it for three to four months and at least attempt to see where, if anything, can be changed in that timeframe.
Whitney, do you have comments on that?
There is a time limit to it, and I'm not remembering exactly what the time limit is. I'm trying to remember if it's sixty or ninety days, and I might be making that up entirely. But I think there's a time limit to it, but we could certainly table it to the next meeting. And it could be tabled from there if we, if we thought that was appropriate.
Would you be okay with that?
Would I have to... So the, most of the money that I spent for this was almost fourteen hundred dollars for the three hundred feet of whatever from the abstract office. Do I have to pay that again?
No, if we table it, we'll just bring this back. There won't be any other fees, so. And that'll give us time to come up with a plan to see what the best...
Six months, I think, so a hundred and eighty days. So depending on when she got it done, it should hold for six months, I think.
So I just need, would I even need to come back to the council meeting next week?
The next, not, well, yeah.
If we table it, you wouldn't necessarily need to come next week because it would not go before council.
Okay.
And then I'll give you a call tomorrow.
But you probably would want to come back whenever it's heard again.
Yeah.
Whenever we table it for, so thirty days, sixty days.
Okay. So we don't know that timeframe yet?
I think what is recommended is we'll table it to the next PC meeting and discuss it then on how long we table it for.
It's our next date.
And that way we'll know the timeframe.
First Tuesday of February.
Push it forward.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
I can look that up. Okay. Do I need to stay here anymore?
February fourth.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then I'll contact you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you all.
Any other discussion? Motion's tabled?
I'll make a motion to table till February fourth meeting.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Newsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. So that will be tabled to the fourth. As a part of new business, Shane, I don't know if you want to jump in, but talking about a possible solution, just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on, I think Shane said that he did some research, and there are other municipalities that also allow short-term rentals in S and C-two and CBD, or they are treated like hotel motel if they're existing commercial. So I think my opinion is we would probably need an ordinance change for any of that. But just thought that might be some discussion today if something we want to recommend.
Yeah, a couple of the ones that I looked up specifically in Oklahoma, like Norman, Tulsa, even Oklahoma City, they all have short-term rental ordinances. I'm not going to remember which ones do what, but they all do something a little bit different. So essentially, let's use maybe Tulsa or Norman as an example. I'm probably calling the wrong city name out there, but they allow short-term rental in any zoning classification. But they also have a special license that the short-term rental owner has to get each year. So, you know, there's a, Mrs. Schussler would have to get a short-term rental license. It's an annual license from the City of Durant saying, "I'm using this property as a short-term rental of thirty days or less." You know, Airbnb, whatever the other ones are, VRBO. So that's how they keep track of what their short-term rentals are everywhere, which also allows them to collect sales tax and hotel tax.
And we definitely need a way to track them, and I think, I've heard of a lot of cities that use the yearly Airbnb license or permit, however they wanted to word that, but it allows you to keep up with how many are in your city and what all residential buildings are being used for Airbnbs.
Yeah. But the different cities had different rules, you know, but the, just the, I mean, North Texas has a lot too, but I didn't get into those. I was trying to focus on Oklahoma municipalities. But most of your major municipalities, like I said, up north, all have it. And it's pretty detailed. Like, I even downloaded a couple of them because, you know, there's no sense in reinventing the wheel when you guys could just piggyback off what somebody else has already done.
Copy and paste is the best route, yes.
But I do think it's, I mean, those municipalities established this, you know, seven, eight years ago. So I do think it's something that Durant definitely needs to get established. That's not the purview of this board, I know, but in terms of in ordinance that would, that would help. Because she's right, even if some of these commercial spots are used as an Airbnb, it gets people into town, it gets them spending money, it gets them doing a lot of other things. So I don't want to, like Drew said, I don't want to say no to someone using their property as an Airbnb. The city just needs to get a way to make it happen in something other than R-three.
Correct.
And I will say, my suspicion is that a lot of what is running in the city right now is not running in R-three.
Very, yeah.
I'm going to agree with you. I highly doubt that they're all running in R-three, probably the majority not running in R-three. And that did get brought to my attention today, and we were discussing what our approach was going to be on existing businesses already using it as that and how we're going to approach that, so.
And R-three may even be a stretch in what we're looking at. Like, R-three is the closest thing that we think it could happen in right now because we don't, we don't define short-term rental at all.
Correct.
Other than hotel motel, which would be allowed in a C-two, which she's already in. It's just a matter of establishing what short-term rental means for the City of Durant.
We may look into, but I think the hotel motel requirement also has a requirement of onsite staff too. We may look into, but I think the hotel motel requirement also has a requirement of onsite staff too. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't qualify as-
Yeah, that's true.
So that kind of brings to, I think we're already talking about it, but it brings to the point that I wanted to bring up. One of the changes I'd like to see is where we specifically identify short-term rental. So it's clearly defined in our uses portion. And so, you know, is there anybody who wanted to comment on whether they feel like it belongs in C2 or CBD?
I'm kind of with Shane in that I'm not necessarily attached to a zoning class. I mean, some properties, especially if you're talking about, you know, one family home, that's a whole different animal than, you know, bread and breakfast where you've got eight or 10 families coming and going, and the room's going. So it's, it's really hard to sit down and make a definition for each zoning class. I will say, her property, I mean, just kind of as an example, her property is a good one for an Airbnb because it's right there at, it's on the corner of that, the strip mall essentially. So, I mean, it's right there by businesses, it's across the street from businesses. I would not want to see that go back to a residential. That would not make any sense for the future use of that property. At the same time, it's extremely appropriate, it's a house. It's extremely appropriate for an Airbnb rental situation. I mean, that's, that's a great use for that particular property.
How would you feel if we did restricted on like R3, C2, CBD, where they needed a CUP for each?
I've thought about that. I mean, the CUP is a nice way of controlling it, is it goes from person to person, making sure you know what's going on on the property. At the same time, every time we get a new owner or anything like that in, they're having to come back in with the CUP. I kind of like Shane, I kind of prefer Shane's idea of the yearly licensing and tracking it that way and letting the city control who they're giving licenses to or what, in what area. That just seems like a better approach to me.
It's a good regulation too. One of the, one of the ordinances that I read, again, I don't remember which municipality it was, but like in their annual renewal, so the city would go out and inspect the property to make sure that things like the windows open in the sleeping rooms and, you know, all the sort of basic code things that have to happen for egress in an emergency out of a house.
Yeah, there's actually a-
So there's, there's things like that that, with that annual inspection, you can make sure that someone-
It's catching fire now, they're, they're doing it all over, especially Oklahoma. I've met with several code offices and talked to them. They're doing it more toward, it, there's some that are doing it strictly for Airbnb and some that are doing it to all rental. They're calling it the Rental Home Renters Association. And essentially what it does is before that Airbnb can be rented out to any new, code enforcement has to go over there, inspect it, make sure everything's still good, lights are still working, outlets are still good. I mean, it makes more sense to do it yearly rather than do it every time they have a tenant coming to occupy. I understand the, on the rental side, the home rental side doing it every occupant because one occupant might occupy it for five years and then they move out and a new renter move in. But that is actually a program that a lot of cities in Oklahoma are adopting for Airbnb and rental properties in general, so.
Yeah.
Well, and one, one kind of counterpoint to this Airbnb business running amok, you know, in some communities, it has become a substantial problem because you get people who are buying up big quantities of property, using them as Airbnbs, and that's going to cause us a housing problem because then we don't have houses available for rent. That's not really an issue for this.
And there has been a, an issue with large corporations coming in and buying up complete single-family residential neighborhoods and converting them to Airbnb neighborhoods, so. Which does, once a commercial company buys it, it's never going back to a single-family owner again. It will always be sold to another company, so.
There's a, again, one of the municipalities I read on this past week, there's a couple of their residential zones that they do not allow short-term rentals in. You know, some of the, I'm going to say R1s or whatever that may be. And then there was one municipality that only allowed short-term rentals in, you know, four of their zoning districts. So I think it can be as-
Yeah, there's definitely some discussion to be had, I know personally, and this is just my personal opinion. I wouldn't want to see R1 or maybe even R2 go Airbnb, but I think C2 and CBD and R3, like Drew had said, are good, are good zonings to have that possible, possibility in there. But I think your R1 and your R2s should be left for, now the R2 is debatable. The R1, being your single family, it, those, those neighborhoods, you kind of, are going to be your housing development and stuff like that. And that would prevent a corporation from coming in and buying up an entire subdivision and converting it to, to Airbnbs, so.
But a different alternative might be too, that you just put a straight-up limit on how many licenses a person can have each year. I mean, say you have five.
Limit them out, just like with yard sales, we limit how many yard sale permits a person can get every year. You could easily do that with, I mean, obviously the number would be greater than two like yard sales is, but, you know.
So Whitney, I got a follow-up question on your, you know, suggestion or thought about doing permitting. Who, who is making the decision on who gets permits and who isn't?
That would be up to the city. I mean, they would have to have somebody, a department in charge of that and controlling that. And I don't know which department they'd want to park that under, so.
I definitely don't want to be-
But if city staff is your-
Yeah, it would, I mean, it would be city staff.
So in that scenario, if we were to recommend that, are we still dealing with zoning issues, or is that?
Not necessarily. I mean, that's just it, that may cut it entirely out from the zoning entirely, depending on how the city wants to set it up and what they, what they want to do with their program and how they want to sponsor it. So it could be something that goes through zoning, it could go completely separate from zoning and never be an issue for us.
I would definitely like to see, whether it's city staff or other, I would like to see the approval and denial of who gets a permit go through some type of board or whether it's a group of city staff members. I definitely don't want to be making that sole decision, and then that's when you can run into that, well, he allowed this person to do it, why ain't he allowing this person in? And you could, ultimately, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd say I'd be unbiased to everybody. But you're going to be accused of being biased if you're an individual person deciding who gets to do what. You know, there's a reason that you have a, a group making decisions on things and. I don't know if that would be to come before PC and city council every time we're going to do a, a short-term rental permit or, like you said, if that's a group of city staff members that get together and decide that, but.
Well, Paul, I might suggest you follow up with city manager and city council to see what their appetite is on, you know, making a change. And then we can, you know, maybe have some further discussion offline about, you know, what that looks like. But Dr. Newsom, you have any thoughts or suggestions we need to consider?
No, I think, I think I tend to agree with Shane, and it'd be nice for us just to have a process where we know how many of those we have in our city. And I think the one, the thing that, that concerns me about this is this young lady is trying to do it the right way and she's hit a roadblock. And I don't, it'd be nice if we could find some solution for her because there's probably others out there who are, didn't do it the right way or are just doing it. I mean, she, she's, she's trying to do it the right way and I'm, I'm inclined to try to help her because I think it's, I agree with Whitney, I think it's a good location for what she's trying to do. I just, but I, but I also agree with you, it's, I don't think we have the authority to, to do it the way the codes are written right now, so. Thanks.
Well, I agree on, on that. I was curious if she was targeted or if she came in and applied for it.
She came in and applied. She had originally come in and wanted it to rezone as R1 or R2, I believe, since that's what it abutted. I knew without a sliver of a doubt that it was not going to go back residential. And I do wish I did further homework to, to learn about the lots and blocks of CBD, but when I looked at the future land use map, she indicated that the future land use was CBD and what that meant, and I said it's mixed use and that I would recommend, I thought her best chance was to get what she was looking for done that way. But, but yeah, she come in and sat down with staff members and presented the idea of what she was looking to do.
Yeah, I'm sure she did it right.
I'm sure she's doing it right. I guess my question is if she decided to go do it as Airbnb, would there be any enforcement to stop her?
There would be. It would be similar as if somebody was operating an illegal business.
Has any Airbnb been enforced to?
That's what the discussion was today. It just now got brought to my attention that there was houses being used for Airbnbs within the city limits of Durant. Like I said, unless, you know, I'm not out there on the streets every day, so unless the billboard's up, I really don't notice it, or unless somebody's reporting it. And it was just now brought up today about residential houses being used for Airbnb. But you would treat it just as similar as a business operating illegally, you'd work stop authority on the, on the property.
So this is, this is outside our realm of even giving some sort of conditional use or exception because of just the, the black and white language of our, of our law, I guess is what we're saying, right? Yeah, I would have to agree with that. I don't want to, but I have to.
I wish there was a way to give her like a temporary something to get her, get her over the hump for a year or whatever it may be, but. Just, just, just another little thing to put in your back pocket as you're talking to city management and staff about this short-term rental deal. There are a couple of municipalities in Oklahoma that have contracted with a third party that keeps up with all the short-term rentals within your city limits.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a company, there's a software company out there that keeps up with all of this and reports that to the city each month.
So, so as it stands right now, the Airbnbs that operate in Durant, we're not collecting sales tax off of those because we don't really know technically who they are and where they are, okay?
That was my point, is there's no governance.
Yeah, there's none.
No, they were done illegally. They weren't brought through the city to be an Airbnb. There was never applications or even knowledge, permits pulled or anything done through the city, so.
Is there a permit application for it?
I don't believe there's a permit application for Airbnb.
Okay, so no one, no one, no one knows. I think it's just, just no one knows.
And I, and I'm not saying they did it with malicious intent because if I was going to turn my property into an Airbnb, I would just assume I could do that. You know what I mean? It's no, to me, it'd be, I wouldn't have thought it was any different than just renting it out long-term, you know.
I think right now you can just do that because the city doesn't have anything that says-
Otherwise.
It would be my opinion. And, and the state of Oklahoma doesn't define it either, because I looked that up also. It's literally up to each municipality to enforce some sort of short-term rental ordinance and, and to define what that is.
Correct.
New, new ground for Durant, I guess.
Well, we have always operated under the, if we don't have nothing that says you can't, we really can't stop you from, you know.
Other than living in a commercial zone like she's asking for.
Yeah, that is her biggest setback, like was mentioned, her property is currently zoned commercial, which absolutely doesn't allow for residential living, so.
Well, with that said, we'll take the rest of the discussion offline and try to come up with a solution.
Thank you all very much.
We have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Newsom?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.